Emily Fotherway, thank you for this privilege to gather together to do business for our town. We pray that everything we've done decently in Jesus' name and that.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to go ahead and list a couple of amendments to the agenda. Under new business, I would like to add Pharmacy Week proclamation. And under committee and council member reports, I'd like to add a tree board meeting. And was there another? And Mr. Perkins, under citizens business verbal, item number three, let's add travel commission update from Bruce Perkins. Does the council entertain a motion to approve the agenda? amended agenda, excuse me. Sorry. We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Does the council entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session of October 6, 2025?
I hope we approve the minutes of both the general meeting and the executive session.
President? Motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Does the council have any nominations for recognition?
I wanted to ask who put up the decorations in front of the police department?
The dispatchers.
I'd like to recommend the dispatcher for a record. What do you call them?
Nomination for recognition. Thanks, Councilman Buck. I also have a couple that I'd like to add. I'd like to nominate First Northern Bank for certificate recognition for getting their sign all cleaned up and updated. It will truly make. Are they done with it, though? I think they're done with it. I still want to nominate them for recognition. And then I'm kind of late to the punch sometimes, but I'd like to nominate Dick and Bonnie Rich. I should have done it at the last meeting for running the Newcastle Shining Show. It was their 19th year and it's always such a wonderful event, so I'd really like to see them get a certificate of recognition for that. Are there any other nominations for recognition? Hearing none, we'll move on to certificates of recognition, which there aren't on, and on to citizens business verbal, item number one, Bruce Perkins and the 24-hour catering permit for the Christmas Bazaar and WCHS banquet.
It's two different permits.
Yes, sir. So 24-hour catering permit that under and by the virtue of provisions of section 12-4-502 subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcoholic Beverage Control Laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the sum of $20 paid by Bruce Perkins doing business as Perkins Tavern of the City of Newcastle, County of Weston hereby licenses, permits and authorizes said Bruce Perkins doing business as Perkins Tavern to sell alcoholic and malt beverages in and upon premises of Weston County Event Center, address being 24 Fairgrounds Road for an event more specifically described as follows: The Christmas Bazaar. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the 6th day of December 2025 at 09:00 a.m. through the 7th day of December 2025 at 09:00 a.m. Does the council entertain a motion to approve the 24-hour catering permit for the Christmas Bazaar? The motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? I hope it's a great event, Bruce.
It's a craft fair, you know, about 40 booths and everything. She just wants us to make sure we have some adult beverages. I think she wanted her mimosas and things like this, so it's supposed to be very low-key, very nice.
Awesome. Well, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. I hope it's agreed with that. All right. Permit number two, 24-hour catering permit that under by the virtue of the provisions of section 12-4-502. You told me how to shorten it up the other day.
You just said the same as we just did for the other.
So you told me a line item, so you might shorten that up?
Yeah. Let me just say 24-hour catering permit for Perkins Tavern. Alcoholic and malt beverages and upon premises of Weston County Event Center, address being and then the time and the date of the event.
Okay. So 24-hour catering permit for Perkins Tavern to sell alcoholic and malt beverages in and upon the premise of the Weston County Event Center, address being 24 Fairgrounds Road for an event more specifically described as follows: Weston County Health Services Banquet. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on the 22nd day of November 2025 at 4:00 p.m. through the 3rd day of November 2025.
3rd day?
23rd.
23rd. Want to write that in?
I think what you needed is a drink.
Oh, I thought it would have been going backwards. 2025 at 4:00 p.m.
You need a time machine.
Okay. Does the council entertain a motion to approve the 24-hour catering permit for Weston County Health Services Banquet? Second. The motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Can I ask a question about the Christmas Bazaar one?
Oh, yeah.
Who has happened at Christmas Bazaar? Who's setting that up?
Uh, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought.
Cassidy Koch? You know Cassidy?
Cassidy?
Yeah, yeah. She's very crafty herself, but she just started getting people together. And this is the second year, actually, she's had it.
I guess, wonderful. Thank you.
I mean, you did say 23rd, right? It was the 22nd through the 23rd?
Bruce, do you have any issue with it being amended to instead of the 22nd day of November to the 3rd day of November and being the 22nd to the 23rd?
Don't be. You wrote it on there.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to be sure.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item number two in citizens business verbal, American Legion 250th Anniversary.
Good evening. Do you want me at the podium or?
Wherever you're comfortable, sir.
No, I'd be more comfortable up there. Come up to the podium then.
What's happening there?
Come on up to the podium.
Okay.
We don't have a staff, so we're regent's team.
You betcha. See, both hands. As many of you know me, I am Kirk Will, commander of the American Legion Post 3 Monroe Land here in Newcastle. We have been discussing, and I've talked to numerous people, we would like to do something on the 4th of July of next year. We have yet to decide what we would like to do, whether it would be, you know, something within the community. So what we're after is, does the city have any suggestions or do we have any means of going forward? We have yet to decide what we'd like to do. Any questions?
Well, they canceled the parade, you know, several years ago that used to be put on by the Newsletter Journal, and they've decided not to be put in on. How about a 4th of July parade?
Well, that is one thing we have discussed, is definitely putting on a parade. I know that the fire department, weather permitting and everything, will be doing fireworks that evening. One of the things that was discussed, and whether or not this is going to be a situation or an issue, is they are doing the 4th of July fireworks at Mount Rushmore this next year. They're expecting thousands of people. Now, whether or not that would be somewhat of a hindrance to what we'd like to do, we don't know. We can't answer that. So we would like to move forward, but I'm not sure. What we need to do, I guess, is make a decision and then get with the city to decide what we want to do. Is that correct?
Will you come up with the ideas and then we'll tell you what we like?
Well, okay, I can do that. Most of our people are smart enough to stay away from Mount Rushmore and constituents. I would like to think so, yeah. Unless you want to walk from here to there just to go. But there will be that. I know that there are other fireworks displays around the hills, but hopefully we would like to. And that was, the main thing that was suggested was to do a parade.
I think that'd be great.
Okay. The Legion would like to follow through with that and take care of it and get it done. Either that or a big community, possibly a picnic in one of the parks where maybe close to where the fireworks will be going off so that people can just stay there and enjoy the day and the fireworks at night too, so. But we'll kind of follow through if the city will allow us to and then bring it to you guys, and we can work on it and then go from there. If we do a parade, is there permits that will need to be? Okay.
Yeah, for any events that you'd like to do, then we would need a special event permit.
And here's the parks too, okay? Your bank or your barbecue or whatever.
Right, right. What is the special permit price? Give you.
$500.
We don't really have a price.
Okay. Because they're going to ask me, so I'll need to pass it on to the Legion group, so. But we'll follow through with it and then we will get back to you possibly in December or January. We want to have enough time to get this followed through. It's going to take some time to put it together.
That sounds great, I think.
Okay. Because I understand there has not been.
That'd be fun.
A parade here within the city limits for a large number of years. You said the Newsletter Journal was going to do one.
No, they used to all the time. They did. Journal used to sponsor the 4th of July parade here.
We talked about a marching band, but unfortunately, the high school does not have enough of a band to put together, so.
Maybe veterans could.
Yeah. They could all fix it up. Yeah.
Get some of those little pickle old things.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, you know, that trumpet we got that we play taps at funerals.
Ooh.
It has a little button in there that you just kind of push and hold it up and it looks like the plan, so.
Well, that's one of the else besides taps for the perk.
Yes. But we will put things together and then bring it to you and we'll follow through with that.
That'd be great.
Wonderful. All right. Great, great. We'll do that and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number three, travel commission update by Bruce Perkins.
Well, I went to a very unusual, different meeting for us today. We had a sponsor from the state travel commission. We had two people from the Youngs Group, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but the state pays them to go around and evaluate travel commissions in counties, and then they come back to us. So we had a dozen people there. We had another state representative who is now one of our contacts, and he's going to be at our meetings by the phone, you know. And we also had PG and G, that they're our digital advertiser, but they also do a lot of other things for us to put together campaigns. If we decide we want to do a campaign on a certain item, then they put it together with some, you know, graphics and everything else and, you know, present it to us and go from there. So we were all together. And first they came out and says, we were here all morning. They drove to the county, up to the four-way, spent time in town, stopped off at Becker's and coffee, you know, talked to different people, same with Upton, and then they had a meeting. And what they were telling us is that what they saw as far as our information, they loved it. They thought it was great. Hiking trails were like top of their list for them. They said that was some of the best hiking trail, I say, advertisement. And I had to tell them since we didn't put it together, that was Ben Sprockets. We just helped pay for it and distribute it. And they said they did a really good job with the hiking trails. And that's one of the things that we've been promoting, and they said, keep it up, try to promote it into the winter. He says what's coming up is, you know, more and more is like bicycle during the winter. But, you know, dirt bike, not dirt bikes, but trail bikes, you know, it's starting to become more of a sport. So he says, try to move things into the winter with that. But he also was telling us how to improve our advertising with, you know, to the state. The state's going to start helping us quite a bit more. And how to increase our revenue. And he told us right now, of 26 counties, we are 21 on the list, and we built $148,000 we brought in. That's last year's figures. All right? And he says, we're going to put together a plan for you three to five years. We want to bring that up to $200,000. Then he explained a little bit on how he wanted to do it. But then he also told us, that's increasing bed count every night in motels, 25 to 30 a night increase. That's tough. It's, I don't think we're going to beat that goal because, like I said, we are out of the way. We don't have any events. We are, you know, off the beaten path. But he told us, he is going to come back with recommendations. It should be in about three days we have to report. So I should have something for you by the next meeting. I'll get you copies of what they recommended we start building. And a lot of it is building on what we already have, what, you know, like the rodeos that come in, the car shows that come in, and things like this. It's going to be an ongoing process. But if we bring it up, if we bring up our revenue, just think how much more traffic's going to be coming through here. And we also talked about the need for more, I say, more employees, more people to work, you know, the restaurants and the bar and, you know, motels and the stores and, you know, what kind of stores. Hopefully, you know, promote certain businesses that would bring in more tourism. So it's going to be an ongoing plan. One of the things was signage. And now we have a contact in the state that we can get directly, you know, to the DOT state instead of, you know, trying to go through our regular here in order to increase signage. So that will be worked on this winter, and hopefully it comes spring when we get some better signage at, you know, the four-way and all around, both directions from town. So that's it. I mean, it's an ongoing process, and they got lots of goals for us. I don't know if we can make it. We'll try, but like I said, it's a three and five-year plan. Well, I'm hoping that will increase, I think everybody is, you know, increase businesses and increase people in town. Maybe we'll grow. Because I know we've had zero growth, I think, in population for what, 20 years? Who sits up in here? So we'll see. But I also told them too, I was kind of disheartened about this whole summer. I mean, we've had a lot of things. DOT signage weren't allowed. Construction, you know, trucks downtown, you know, Jake breaks, kids all over the streets. I said, you know, ding after ding after ding after ding, that hurts. And he says, just as, like he's, I'm telling you, he says, it's an ongoing process. You know, once this gets corrected, you know, other things can automatically fall in and things can be corrected. So we have to say to help us though this time.
Mr. Perkins, so it seems like we have multiple groups working on a lot of the same things.
Right.
So we have two economic development studies and projects going right now, and in those projects, we're asking about a lot of the things that you just listed off, right? Trying to find the right businesses to come to town, trying to find, you know, ways to increase activity on main streets and stuff. And I do agree that there were some hiccups this summer, you know, but we got the construction done on the overpass. We're working on correcting some of the ordinance issues, you know, so it's a, it's a work in progress. But if you would be willing to, you know, if you have some good information that you get from you guys' study to share it with us and do likewise.
All of this was developed tourism, okay? It's not developing businesses. And like he explained, he says, we are a state-funded entity, like the Chamber, that is a membership-funded entity. They don't work together. You know, there's two different goals in mind, all right? And two different ways of funding it, and they just don't actually work together. And he said, because we were talking about an employee, and I asked, well, can we put the employee in the Chamber? No. So because they got two different goals, two different responsibilities, all right? It's okay if they work together, you know, as far as cooperation and communication, but don't let them, you know, actually sit side by side in the same business doing it. And I believe that would be the same with the business development. Business development is great, yeah, but if it's oriented towards tourism, that's even better, in my point of view. So, yeah, we can bring that to you, and it would be a suggestion on what kind of businesses.
So the networking collaboration was what I was referencing.
Okay.
So I mean, like, any good information that you can bring back might be helpful, and then, I mean, that's one of the troubles too, is everybody is funded different, we all have different goals, but if we can find a way to work together to try to make our town better, then all the better for everyone who lives here.
What I'm more excited about is that now we have state people that we can go to. We have two different state people. One's in the tourism, and the other one is to, you know, government offices, like the DOT and other, you know, if we have a certain problem in a certain area, we can go to him. If he doesn't know, he said, I'll find out for you what state office you need to talk to in order to get, you know, iron out the problem. So it is, I guess we're ranching out a little bit more.
Sounds good.
I think we have a lot enough, we have enough traffic. We just don't have any reason for them to stop.
Correct. You know, we're not a destination. We never have been. We've never had those large events. We've had more events that will bring people in from all the counties that are still bringing people in. If we had a nice worldwide event, love it, but, you know, fight little town.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Perkins? No, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening. Okay, moving on to citizens business in writing, there is none on the old business. There's no old business. Moving on to new business, Pharmacy Week proclamation has approached by one of my neighbors who's a pharmacist, and she asked if I could read a proclamation in regard to what pharmacists do. So proclamation, whereas pharmacists are experts in successful use of today's complex medications, and whereas patients in hospitals and health patient clinics receive better care when pharmacists are directly involved in medication management decisions, and whereas pharmacist direct involvement in patient care helps reduce unnecessary costs and burden on the health system, and whereas the pharmacists and pharmacy technicians practicing in the acute assisted living, long-term care and ambulatory care settings of Newcastle, Wyoming contribute to the health and well-being of our citizens, and whereas American Society of Health System Pharmacists, American Society of Consultant Pharmacists, and the mayor's office have declared October 19 through the 25th, 2025 as Pharmacy Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Tyrell Owens, do proclaim October 19 through 25th, 2025 as Pharmacy Week. And the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, and urge all of our citizens to acknowledge the valuable services of the pharmacists and pharmacy technicians who work in inpatient, outpatient, home care, and long-term care settings, and all they do to help patients make the best use of their medicines. And witness, therefore, I have here on two step my hand and cause this deal to be a face.
It's an official drug.
You cannot fix Washington DC from within Washington DC. You have to fix it from the outside. It has to be citizen uprising, and the only way you can do it is through an Article 5 convention. There are lots of other ideas that people throw out there that aren't in the Constitution necessarily. This is a peaceful, legal, constitutional method for reigning in the federal government, which, like I said earlier, is the responsibility of the states. That's, that's one of their roles, and they've advocated that responsibility horribly. Our founders would be appalled that we're thinking of solutions other than an Article 5 convention, because that's the process they put in for this purpose.
Okay. Was anybody else on the council on the new business? It's not on the agenda, no. Hearing none, we'll move on to committee and council member reports, Boys and Girls Club. I was able to take some PTO from work last Friday, and actually, the Friday before last, sorry. I went with Tamara Allen, who runs our double Aces program and our after-school programs with kids, over to Gillette to meet with the Boys and Girls Club. It was a really great meeting. They have a wonderful facility there, the City of Gillette, and I do realize that Gillette has, you know, advantages that Newcastle doesn't have, you know, given the population and the income of their county and their access to funding. But they were given an old elementary school for a dollar, and they turned it into their Boys and Girls Club facility. And so we got a tour of the facility. It was a, it was a really great facility. It was a, it was a really great facility, well cap, very clean. And the best part was that we got Tamara and Brittany Locke and their executive director together in the same room. And they're both very passionate about children and what they can do for children or community. So they kind of talked about things that were a little over my head, about how they leverage their funding, what programs that they operate under. And through the course of the conversation, they talked about how if Boys and Girls Club and Tamara's organization were able to form a partnership, that there would be opportunities for the kids to do things that don't fit into Tamara's program. So there, there would be opportunity for the kids to do a little bit more. And then through the course of the conversation, we talked about, you know, possibly looking into some community facilities grants. And I put it on our grant writers radar. Because one of the things that Tamara would really like to see is, you know, a place that maybe we could take, you know, like our recreation, like a recreation facility slash a facility to host her program. So that was one of, that's one of the things on the wish list in the long term. So they, they were, it was really fun to watch those two interact because they're so passionate about what they do. So I just played the fly on the wall and kind of listened. And then Brittany also showed us ways that she's able to leverage funding in her community. And they have like, you know, the Changing Lives Society, where they're able to leverage some funding by having businesses donate some money to the Cubs. And then there's like a monthly giving, Club Impact. So you've got, you have different levels that you can donate funds and get different levels of recognition. And she does have a lot of really cool, they do a lot of cool events that are able to help them generate some revenue. But the one big takeaway from the meeting was that we need to try to identify some people in the community that would be willing to serve as cheerleaders and ambassadors for the local community, almost like a steering committee, so that we can start trying to move the project forward. So as with a lot of the things that we do in the city, it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of work and meetings and everything. Identifying people that are really excited about opportunities to move children's programs forward. So that's what I was working on. I just wanted to provide counsel with an update. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for the call.
Oh, thanks. It was my pleasure. It was, it was a fun trip. Any other questions, comments? And I'll go ahead and move on to RCAC Community Coordinator position. The Economic Development Committee and myself have been working with Amity, Remble and RCAC. And trying to move forward our, our project, our economic development project. I just signed one of the documents today and we got it sent in. I need to call an Economic Development Committee meeting so that we can finish an application that is part of the process for moving the project forward. I'll get with you and John here in the next week or two, if you guys are available. But we can discuss that after the meeting. And then also, we need to start the process of advertising and looking for a community coordinator. And that's the, one of the key positions in the, in the project to get it to be successful. So we're going, I was gonna see if the Personnel Committee could look at the Community Coordinator job description and see if they want to move, this is a template that I provided by RCAC. And see if you guys could give it a once-over so that we can go ahead and get it in the paper after you guys get your eyes on it and, and start advertising for the position.
Are we pretty much gonna have that position be a part-time?
I believe it's a part-time position. I think it's, all it says here in the job description.
Absolutely.
Or maybe it doesn't.
Additional information, this is part-time position conversation will depend on experience.
Okay. So anyway, if the Personnel Committee wants to arrange a time to give this a once-over and maybe come back for the next meeting with a, there's another way to ask. Could I get this doubling? Could I like have them look at it? And if we make a motion to adopt whatever they approve, can we get it run a little bit quicker in the next meeting?
The council can run a, you know, add on the paper at any time as long as, you know, the motion at least outlines everything you want. If it doesn't, you can always add to it at the next meeting if you need.
So what do you say, council? Do we want to make a motion that we provide this to the Personnel Committee? And have them make edits? And that we get it in the newspaper as soon as possible? Does that work?
Fast track.
I'd move that we do that. I second that we move that we do that.
We have a motion, Dr. Lee seconded. Is there any discussion?
So what are we doing?
They're gonna fast track it in.
So what we're doing now is we're just putting it in our lap?
Yeah, but pass the buck to you guys.
Just give this a once-over and so we can get it adjusted. Yeah, we need to, and one of the things I think I see that we need to adjust is, oh no, nevermind. I can, we can get Amity on the horn too and she can provide guidance as well.
There's no wages out here up to there.
Okay, that's something that we'll definitely have to add. Because the grant is good for $75,000 over a three-year period. So it would be $25,000 a year.
Well, what we've decided on that, that she said on the, on our meeting, is that $25,000 has to cover her office expenses and travel expenses and such other things. It isn't just all.
It isn't just wages.
So there's no designation as to the wages and anything specifically as a cost of money?
Not on this.
Not on here.
No, no, no. So it's something that we have.
Well, we could have the committee then just randomly decide on a dollar amount.
Okay. Better to wait until next council meeting and see what we can come up with as far as guidance, yeah? Okay.
I wasn't drawn on motion, the motion, the motion.
Okay. Motion withdrawn, withdrawn. Okay. Thanks, council. There's a, we have any further questions? I got lots of questions too. I just want to see us get through the preliminary phase of the project so that it can start working. I'm, I'm excited about it. I just, we just gotta get through the preliminary portion. Any other questions? Okay, move on. Pocket Park. I met with Public Works Supervisor Greg Stumpf. We looked at the pocket park and kind of came up with a plan to move forward. We want to just make it a blank slate. So the idea is to move the fence off the sidewalks, back to the back of the two buildings, so that it makes a barrier, which is one of the concessions I made with the adjacent business owners so that we could get the lease sign. So we just have to have a, a physical barrier at the back so people can't just run straight through that with their concern. So it's, we, we want it to be really low maintenance. So the idea was just to clean out the topsoil, get all the weeds and everything out. And then put down a layer of, you know, weed barrier, just to start. And then we can start working with the public or whatever we want to do to try to move the park project forward in the design process. So that's all I have to report about that. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we need a new fence? Is that, or is that gonna be?
I, I think we can reuse the materials that we have and then we can stain it so it looks nicer. But we just need to move it back and make it fit between the two buildings.
I know what you're saying, but that, that one that's out front is able to be used, you think?
I think so. It's, it's solid. It's just doesn't look really nice right now. It'd be better with a coat of stain on it. Any further questions? Okay. Moving on to Streets Committee.
The Streets Committee had a meeting and the three of us met down at the Frank Chevrolet building. And I got recommended to you all go down there. He's a massive, most unique bunch of items down there, the seat in his building. But what we met about was our streets. And it was that we had in the years past, a kind of a momentum towards having all of the properties and equipment and things that we need to chip and spray our own streets. And we decided to recommend to the council that the council votes to get Greg to put into his plans, a definite plan that we will have the equipment and things to chip and spray our own streets soon. That's all we met about.
Mayor, if I may, we have moved this. We found an applicating unit to be able to do the spraying. The problem we're having is finding the rollers. We need to be able to have rollers that can ballast up to 15, 15 tons. Pneumatic tire type. Most of them we're finding used for sale are Pennsylvania, New York, Florida, places like that.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
We're trying to find something that's closer right now. The applicator unit we found is this kid unit. We can slide one of our current dump trucks. It's $60,000 for the unit. We've looked into hauling the emulsion in, the oil in, to be able to spray. We actually have one local trucking company that has heated semi-tanks that we can actually have a material haul there. So we are working.
Where do you get those?
Quarry. Yeah, we get three-inch chips all the time. So they make them on a regular. Same type of chip we use in our garage.
So all we're looking for is a, is a roller?
The rollers, yeah. It's recommended two rollers. I figured we'd try it with one if we find one close enough to purchase at a reasonable price.
What closest is your budget to being able to do that?
Not really.
So we have to, we'll have to put some more?
With the cut in the property taxes last year, it took, my street budget took a hit. Pretty good.
So you got maybe a year, two years?
It depends on how much rollers spend. Right now, we have to beat the applicator unit for $60,000. The closest roller I found was $185,000. So the less expensive ones are farther away. You've got the trucking inability to inspect the equipment before purchase to make sure it operates properly. That's one of the bigger things I'm concerned about is making sure we get a bed machine and not somebody's reject that's in absolute useless abuse.
Where will we actually get them to?
Where will we actually get it here? Chip and seal is a big part of my, my programs. The crack ceiling, we got that taken care of. We have a lot of chip spreaders. We figured out everything but the little, so if we have that place, then we can begin. You're absolutely right. Ceiling in the streets is one of the biggest things we need to do. The streets we've done recently, we need to make sure they stay in shape or maintain properly. There are some that just are way past anything. You don't share them. Unfortunately, those are going to be big ticket prices to pay or take care of those streets. What we are working on.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, is that, is there any more questions for the Streets Committee?
Yeah, I got one.
Sir?
Greg, on Stampede, Bonnie Bray, Frontier, Highland and Cascade, the streetlights, they're all out and Halloween's coming up here. Want to know if maybe we can get those lights on before Halloween?
I submitted it to Black Hills Energy. So we drove the streets here the last couple, three weeks at night. One employee worked about two or three hours over 10 each during the week. Looked at all the street lights. We submitted that to Black Hills Energy. Now it's just a matter of when they can schedule their work.
Okay, thank you. And also for the Streets Committee? And then a thing, we'll move on to capacity development.
Okay, that's, that's this little booklet right here. And you were all sent a copy of this to your emails last, two weeks ago. And Stacy worked on, on what, what we have on the electronic copy and got it all basically down to something that we can print on 30 pages of double-sided. And after we both looked at it and went through it completely, what, what we decided, it, it's written kind of like for a city or something. It's not, it's not something that we felt that actually was applicable. But in the, in the booklet, there's a lot of questions and there's a lot of recommendations that would be good towards a capacity development committee to do. And that, we think that whoever's going to become the coordinator for RCAC needs these questions and, and these recommendations that are in here to carry on his or her project. And maybe we don't want to be doing something separate from that. And that, that's my report about this. I think it isn't that we should jump it. I think I would like for all of you to please look at this that's in your, in your email and read through it and see what you think is pertinent to our city. And then, then we can give that to the mayor and when he gets his coordinator person and we have something to offer that person as far as community capacity.
Is that something that we can add to some of the stuff that we do with the economic development?
That's what I'm saying. They probably should all go into their, as a, as a foundation, kind of.
Yeah, and then the rest of the council will be welcome, provide feedback. Some of the stuff that's in the Aspen Institute manual that I think is important is just like some of the basic things, right? Kind of like the city having a mission statement, right? I mean, I feel it's important and I think that's something that we should have maybe even a workshop in the future to try to pin down a mission statement for what the city of Newcastle should be providing for its citizens. You know, like, you have to kind of have an idea of the direction that you want to go with your governor, your mayor needs.
Do you think that, that we could ask each and member of the council to please go through this so that we can, we can have that workshop? And then we got, we have something to bring together and we know things that we don't want and things that we do want. And then that we can start. And then that we can start our core to economic development? Please.
Do you have any questions for Tom? No? Okay, moving on, final item under Committee and Council Number Reports. We had a Tree Board meeting last weekend on Wednesday. I stepped down as the Board Chair of the Newcastle Tree Advisory Board. I just, between my day job and, and some of the other stuff I got going on, I just, I wasn't putting the meetings together, and I wasn't doing any of my board very good service. So I stepped down, but I still remained like on the board. But we, we designated Caleb Carter as the new Board Chair of the Tree Advisory Board. He's also works for the Weston County Natural Resource District, and he's just an overall good guy. And he can actually, he's allowed in his role as a, at the district to actually do some of the Tree Board stuff during the course of his normal workflows. So that's pretty helpful. Caleb gave an update on the American Ramp Design Discussion for the Backyard Park. He also talked about the Trail Work Day that was scheduled for the 18th, which was a Saturday, I believe. And anyway, we got all that moisture, and there was really money out there, so we weren't able to go. They canceled the, the Work Day at the Backyard Park. The arborist, Travis Peterson, gave us an update on some of the troubled trees around town. And then we also discussed some things in reference to the way some of the trees have been managed in the community. Sometimes it's a little bit heavy-handed with the way that some of the material is moved. So it's pretty hard on some of our, our trees. So then, we also talked under Old Business about problem tree ordinance examples. It's in the Newcastle Tree Advisory Board's per view in our ordinance book that when the council gives them a directive, that they're supposed to work on things. So the Tree Advisory Board, when requested by the governing body of the city, shall consider, investigate, make findings, report and recommend upon any special matter or question, question coming within the scope of its responsibilities. And that's from Section 22-22, Tree Advisory Board Duties and Responsibilities. So they had heard about some of the concerns that had been brought to the council meetings. And, and so then they got a jump on it. And they started looking at some of the dangerous tree ordinances from some of the larger municipalities in the state. There was one from Cheyenne and one from Casper. And so if the council so chooses, we can have the Tree Advisory Board continue to work on the problem tree ordinance revision, and then bring a recommendation to the council. So if the council would like to do that, we could make a motion on that tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we probably should also set some standards in the ordinances as far as height over roads, height, height over sidewalks, if we need anything. And there was a couple of the things that Travis and I had discussed, the arborists had discussed, that probably should be brought before the, the Tree Board too, to look, review the ordinances and make recommendations for changes in the ordinances.
Okay, so it was your understanding. My takeaway from the meeting was that we kind of wanted to take some of these and kind of go through them and then kind of steer. But you're, you're saying that Travis would like to work on them all, or what?
No, I, I would recommend the Tree Board work on these.
Oh, okay.
The arborists and I have discussed setting standards for height clearances, stuff like this. They would also need to be looked at in the ordinances as well.
Okay.
And make proposals made, along with doing these things.
So will the council entertain a motion to have the Newcastle Tree Board work on problem tree ordinances for the city of Newcastle? So? Do we have a motion promptly seconded? Is there any discussion?
I think this would be good for him to go through and review some of the issues that's been around. I never knew, I guess, that there was some thing of more of that responsibility lane until they come up here last fall or spring. Just kind of wondering whose responsibility it was as a landowner, or did it come into the cities when it kind of approaches into the center of the roadways? Because personally, I'm avoiding specific trees that's in my camper throughout the long camp and not trying to tear off the air conditioning unit.
When we identify a tree that's a bad tree, what do we do with it?
Well, that's the topic. We're gonna try to look into revisions to take care of those, Mr. Buss. So one of the concerns too is in the proper way to prune a tree, so that you don't do structural damage to the tree. It is, it's kind of a science, so it needs to be done appropriately. And sometimes that requires actually making the, the cuts, you know, on the tree trunk itself, which is usually located on private property. So, well, Mr. Buss, I heard you talked about it. Do you have something to add?
No, we're used to leaning on trees. We had, we go quite a bit of a tree there, and we always trip over the sidewalk.
Yeah, so people walk through them. It's a nice tree.
It is, yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.